Okay.
It's not parliamentarian, but that's all right.
All in favor?
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The first topic is to discuss and hear public comment and consider ordinance number 23-2, adopting a county grocery receipts tax.
Yeah, anybody?
Nobody's turned up.
We do have a side of the chief, but if somebody could...
Okay.
I know.
You want to start us off, R B., or...
Sure. So, the first order of business is, in the background information that I provided, I provided the incorrect amount. I had the amount of county, the county rate of GRT prior to July 1 this year. So, when the state lowered its, did its second lowering of GRT, that took ours down from 6.1875 to, it's actually now 6.0625. And that's in the data sheets that I provided yesterday that shows a breakdown of all counties and municipalities and villages, what their tax rates are. But calculating any increase to date needs to be done with that number. But we first talked about this in the spring when we were considering a pay raise. And so, I was surprised when, I thought everyone was committed to doing the increase at that time by passing the salary increase. So, I was surprised when there was some opinions of not passing it now. I was not expecting that. I thought we were just going to probably discuss the amount, but not whether to do it at all or not. And so, in terms of why we should do it, there's no shortage of reasons from the pay increase that you approved. That only accounted for inflation over the last three years. It didn't address the issues and disparities outlined in the wage study that was conducted in 2020 that we paid $50,000, I believe, in taxpayer dollars to get. That still has yet to be looked into and addressed. So, all those pay situations that make us less competitive than other places, those all still exist and should be at least considered and looked into. Otherwise, we were wasteful in getting that wage study done. We have the issue of Chaparral. They need, they need to be incorporated. Ideally, they'd be incorporated, but they're not. Their population, if we include the Doñana site, is almost as big as Almagordo now. And it's not showing any signs of slowing down. So, when you think about the terms of services and just law enforcement presence that Almagordo has for its population, are we meeting that for the people of Chaparral? Because those needs are only going to go up. And either they incorporate and account for it themselves, but until they do that, they're our responsibility and will require our resources. In terms of services, there are all sorts of services and expansion of services from, you know, our animal shelter is at capacity. There's all sorts of issues surrounding it. Do we increase the size? Do we get an in-house vet? That money has to come from somewhere. And then, you have people wanting their roads dealt with, flooding dealt with, code enforcement dealt with. All of that requires funding. It doesn't come from somewhere magical, you know? I don't like raising taxes, and I'm for smaller government. And, you know, you can't have both, though. So, if people want these services, they need to be willing to pay the tax increase. Or, we need to get comfortable telling them, we provide these basic services, law enforcement, fire, et cetera, but above and beyond that, we can't afford unless we raise taxes. And people need to understand that. As far as types of taxes, at least GRT is a big portion of it paid by anyone passing through the town or the county. So, it's not just on the backs of the residents of the county. And then, and I think it's important to look at what other counties are doing, just in terms of counties that are like us. Take Chavez, McKinley, Rio Riva, all of them will have higher GRT even if we do this increase. They have similar populations. They actually have higher poverty levels than we do. And we actually have more housing units, so we may bring in more property tax, even though we have a small base to draw from. I wasn't able to get into the data as much as I would have liked, but all that is important to look at. And then, looking at their budgets, they are all spending more than we are on a lot of these things, such as road department, buildings and grounds, and a lot of other areas. The only area where I saw where Otero County spends more was on law enforcement and detention. Those are things to be cognizant of. Public reaction, I haven't received any emails about this. No one showed up today. The Almagoro Daily News did an article on it. There's not one like, dislike, single reaction on their page for the article. I haven't seen anything in the normal rumor mill groups on Facebook where everyone gets upset about this or that. So, the public doesn't care, or, you know, the info's been out there. And there's also the fact that the states lowered the rate by a quarter over the last two years. Even if you did the maximum of 3/16ths, it would still be less than that quarter. So, people would still be in a better position than they were two years ago, as far as what they're paying in terms of GRT or sales tax. I would, I would ask you to consider Agenda One, Item One on its face, and either vote yes or no. If we send it to the voters, it is an 80% likelihood that they're going to vote it down. Because who's going to vote for a tax increase? It's just, it's the way it goes. In 2012, there was a specific GRT increase the county could do. I can't remember exactly what it was for, but a lot of people came and spoke in favor of it, acknowledged the benefits it could bring to the community. The commission passed the ordinance, and it went to the voters, and it didn't pass. So, if you send it to the voters and it doesn't pass, then you can't revisit it for at least a year. So, I would, I would say just either do it or don't, but if you're not going to do it, sending, passing the buck on the voters isn't the way to do it.
Do you know how this worked when, I know it was when Commissioner Reardon was on, and they voted for this? To me, it seems like they already voted for this tax. We just never implemented it. Is that correct?
I was just looking up to see which one it was.
I think that was the 2012 one. And it was, it was, it was for a specific function. They did away with a lot of that in 2019 when they updated the laws, and they just changed it to, the county could raise the GRT so much for any use without voter approval, and then above that to the cap, that percentage would need to go to voters if you wanted to raise it that much more.
I can't get into Pro Box.
But yeah, that was in 2012. So, I think that was when Commissioner Reardon was in office. And the full commission was for it from reading the minutes, and lots of people came and spoke in favor of it from both sides of the aisle.
Well, I did some calculations on it, and if you spend $100, if we did the full increase, the full 3/16th, it's only going to increase at 19 cents if you spend $100. So, it's not a huge burden on the tax, you know, our taxpayers. It is a huge burden on the county every time the governor decreases the taxes, because we take a pretty big hit on that. So, in my opinion, I would go with the full 3/16th and get us up to where we can start getting a bank built for our ditch crew, because this flooding is getting worse. I know I have it in my, all three of us have it in our districts. And if we can start building a bank, and then we'll have the money available when we get people hired, when we, and then we'll have it to start buying equipment. But I think if we don't do this, we're going to be having the same discussion years down the road, and we're going to still have people that are flooding, and we're not going to have the money to take care of them. So, that's, that's my two cents on it.
And one other consideration, last Friday or Thursday, the state came out with its application for counties to apply for courthouse funding. And most of this probably doesn't apply to us. We still have to submit the application. But one of the criteria or things that they ask in that is how much GRT capacity does the county have? And, or, you know, are they maximizing the use of that? Because if they're going to give you money for a courthouse, they want to see if you have capacity in your GRT to raise it. And you're not doing that to help pay for the courthouse, then they're going to look at that as a negative. Shouldn't impact us, because ours is part of a court settlement as far as what we're getting. But it's just, in terms of future state money, that's something that they look at, like, if you have capacity, why are you not using it? Another consideration is grants. Grants are great, but we need to acknowledge that grants are still taxpayer funded. They don't, you know, come from the magic grant land. It's still off the backs of people that are paying to the federal government. And they're out there, but that doesn't mean, there's no guarantees about getting them. We're working towards it. Pablo's doing a great job, but just because we apply doesn't mean we're going to get it. And, and also, I don't know if you're aware, like, the grants now come with, you need to explain how it meets social justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion when you're applying for it. There's, nothing is free in getting money from the federal government, just like making deals with the force service. It's making a deal with the devil, and it comes with its own, you know, loopholes and requirements that may be saddled with, saddled upon you with taking that money. GRT at the local level, we take that money in, and we can use it any legal way that you see fit when needs arise.
The tax that was considered in 2012 that was passed by the board by ordinance, went to the voters, was the quality of life tax. That was the one that failed on the ballot.
And that was for a quarter percent, right?
Yes.
So, that was for a quarter percent, and the board approved it. People spoke in favor, but when it went to a vote, obviously, people see tax, just like when they see bonds, no thanks.
I'd like to mention that the last grocery receipts tax that we did pass was in 2015. It was effective as of January of 2016. That was done without a referendum. It was the hold harmless tax, 1/8% for the courthouse and the detention center. That particular tax, once the bonds are paid off in 2028, that 1/8% will sunset. We will no longer have that. And so, I'm saying this in, in reference to the document that Commissioner Barella gave to us regarding dedicating a potential increase specifically to a ditch crew. I would recommend against that, because I think the largest expense is going to be the startup expense for the ditch crew. Once that startup expense has been expended, and yes, it will also help for the payment of salaries over the years as well. But in 2028, we're going to lose an eighth percent. There's debt service on other bonds that still needs to be paid. There's a 2014 series and a 2020 series, grocery receipts tax, hold harmless grocery receipts tax revenue bonds. And so, if we were to dedicate any new increment to basically any general operating expenses, we could use it for debt service if we needed to. We could build it up, use the majority of it for, to get the ditch crew started. But then, once it's started, if we dedicate it specifically just to the ditch crew, then we can't use it for anything else. So, I would recommend against that.
And I share that opinion.
So, I just did this as an example, so, and to show how we can show the importance and the need to the voters in our reasoning for the questioning of raising, that is the reason why I worded this way, so it can be changed anyway. But I wanted it to be completely transparent, if we put this to the voters to decide, that this is flat, because we need the money to do the flooding. We did come in under budget after giving our raises, and that makes me think that we can cut the budget even more. And that is my direction, is I think we can find the funds to fund a ditch crew. I think we can find a grant to buy the equipment. And, and yeah, is it still taxpayer dollars? Yes. But nobody sees that impact out of their direct wallet. It is, that is, and it's free money that is going to go somewhere if we don't grab it. And we have the opportunity to grab it through soil and water, through, I mean, there's so many opportunities through flooding that we can apply for these grants. And so, my reasoning of putting this on the ballot again, and so descriptive, is, and I don't, and I have not asked, talked to Robin, but every election, they have a pamphlet that explains what bonds are going for and all that. And that's the reason why I put all of the explanation on here. Obviously, that wouldn't be on the ballot, but hopefully, it would be printed in the, in the pamphlet as further explanation. The simple question of shall Otero County, New Mexico, adopt a tax increase on the grocery receipts tax by 3/16th percentage points, with the additional revenue generated solely dedicated to the establishment and maintenance of dedicated ditch crew for the purpose of enhancing water management, maintenance, flood prevention, and for the county's ditches and waterways? Now, we don't have to say solely. We can reword that, and, but for the purpose of, or whatever. I'm okay with that. But I think if we go through and explain to the people the need, everybody in Otero County knows we need flooding corrections. I think if we sell this, it will pass, but it'll be on the voters' decisions. And with the economy that it is right now, I understand. The county's under the same difficulties of trying to pay its bills. I get it. And we are tighter. We came in under budget, and we're going to be tighter with the way things are going. But I just, I feel we can cut it and, and work with it.
You finished?
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me. Get all choked up there. In the, this is going to be my little spill. The county is a service provider. Commissioner Barella's business is a service provider. My personal business is a service provider. What we were providing for a business in 2015, or the start of 2016, the dollar is no comparison to what it is at 2023 right now. If you're going to be in business and you're going to survive and provide a service, you've got to stay up with the times, and you've got to be able to have, you can't go backwards in your money. A quick example, in 2015, concrete was probably $110 or $115 a yard. It's over $140 a yard now. That, that's a big step. Studs for a house that used to be $3 apiece are now $570 something. So, how can you continue to operate on 2016 money? Yes, we came in under budget, but you're, you're wiping 1.5 million out of our budget, out of our general fund that we should have for in there for, if we ever had a big emergency come up, a big flooding, for example, 506, whenever they tore it up, that was over $2 million just to repair that right there, which we haven't repaired yet, and we're still trying to wait to get some money. When you have something like that comes up, that's a major highway for not only emergency services, for the community that lives there, access to Timmeron, several means of it. If we don't, my feelings, and I'm not talking bad about the people of the city of Almagordo, but if we put this to vote here, 90% of the people that's going to come in and vote are probably going to be Almagordo city residents, and they're going to say, well, none of this is going to affect me, so they'll vote, no, why not, right off the bat? It's the Otero County residents, the ones that live out of the city, because the city's taking care of the streets and roads here. It's the ones that we have to provide material. We have to try to prevent the flooding. We have to fix their roads. We have to provide our sheriff department to get there, our fire departments to get there. Yes, there's grants out there. I haven't seen too many grants roll across the table yet to help the fundings. So, I'm not counting on any of that money until I see it. And this has already been approved correctly, and we don't have to take it to a vote until it's over 1%. So, I'm not trying to hide anything from the residents, but they have to realize that the only way we can provide our service to Otero County is we have to be able to pay for the service to provide. That's my, listening to what you said, you know, last night, I, I was for, I wanted to get some money put aside strictly for the ditch crew, because I didn't want to see it go anywhere else. I wanted to make sure it was going to be there to get this thing rolling. I do understand what you just said. I, it takes a little while for it to sink in to me, but I still, because I don't want this money, if we, if we, this goes through, I want a part of it to go to that ditch crew, or to try to at least get it started, and then we can fund it and get the budget going for it. But it's, I feel we have to, every business in town has raised their prices, and we still haven't. So, that's, that's my little spill on it.
So, I guess I operate on a business that is regulated by the state on what I can charge, and I don't have the opportunity to say, oh, I'm going to raise you 10%, because the state dictates what I can charge. And the state gives me a raise about every 13 to 15 years. So, I have to learn how to, to budget and cut my expenses in order to accommodate until they decide to give us raises. So, I'm, I'm okay with digging in deeper and getting rid of what we don't need. That's just, that's what I've done.
Could we put a time limit? Like, if we did do an increase, could we put, like, the first year, the funds go towards the ditch crew, and then after that? Just, I just want to make sure we have money in there to get us started. Can you do that?
You could do a resolution separately, a budgetary resolution that allocated a certain percentage of whatever you wanted to a certain line item that you identify, such as... percentage of whatever you wanted to a certain line item that you identify, such as the ditch crew, and set the terms using that.
So we had decided that it would be about 1.5 million to get that up and going? So if we dedicated the 1.5 million to that, and then the rest of it could go if we need it for the courthouse, or?
I think what RB is saying is, I think, well, in my opinion, the ordinance itself that is passed, that should be for general operating purposes, but then you can pass a resolution that you can change at any time stating that for this fiscal year, we want the entire amount to go to the ditch crew, maybe the following year, you want it to go to something else, and if it gets to the point after 2028 that we need some of it for debt service, you could consider a resolution to dedicate a certain portion of it for that. But I think if you make an overall dedication of general operating expenses initially on the ordinance, I think that would be, in my opinion, the best way to go.
And I think even if you make a case to the taxpayers, I think, I think they want to have their cake and eat it, too. They want something for nothing, and so they want their roads fixed, but they don't want to pay for it. They think they're already paying enough, and again, taxes are problematic, but we also, we can't make the money magically appear, and the cost, as Commissioner Matherly said, have gone up exponentially and are going to continue to do so. And said, it's either we tell them, sorry, you get what you get, and you'll like it, or if you want more, that comes with a shared cost. And at least with this tax, rather, I mean, we could raise, there's a specific property tax that could be put on everyone in the flood zones, but that's only paid by the property owners. And with this tax, everyone pays it, and out-of-towners pay it, too.
One other thing, if we don't, a lot of these insurance companies are also, they're starting, if you're in a flood zone, it costs, it's outrageous what you have to pay for insurance, and they are starting to, if you're in a flood zone, they won't uncover you. So if we don't do something to try to control the water, it's going to be a bad deal. Now, another expense to this ditch crew deal, which we haven't talked about it too much, there's going to be some of these ditches, because they've been so long, they haven't been maintained, they're going to take a little engineering to get to where they work out, so we don't come in and we dig this out, but now we're flooding this person over here. So it's going to have, there's going to be, and that's probably going to be a large sum of money. Yesterday, when Tom was in and talking, there's utilities that are, instead of being down where they used to be, now they're up this far below, so you've got a hump in the ditch, it's just holding water. So that's going to be an issue we're going to have to deal with a little bit. So that's above and beyond that 1.5 million. So, I, I wouldn't just limit this, if we, say we dedicated this to the ditch crew until it gets to the 1.5, I would go a little bit beyond that just for trying to cover that hidden expense and then shut it off, to have a little cushion there. That's another thing to think about, too. There is, there is more expense than that piece of paper that Tom gave us last night.
And we have the thousands of dilapidated buildings across the county that everyone wants dealt with, and, you know, 30,000 a pop to get rid of, and most, in most cases, we will not recoup that money. That is money to spend to get rid of the blight and unsightliness. And so, like I said, there's a ton of those, and everyone wants them dealt with. We're killing an unfortunate amount of dogs and cats every day because our shelter is at capacity. And, you know, as far as what we're budgeting for road maintenance and stuff, it's not comparable to the other counties that are similarly situated to us.
And if I remember correctly, when they passed the hold harmless tax for the courthouse, the commissioners and others, I think judges, all went to Rotary Clubs and all of the local meetings and targeting the voters to explain why it was needed. And if we are all passionate about getting this tax passed via vote, then all of us need to go to these meetings and explain the necessity that we have and get it done. And I'm willing to do that, but I'm just unwilling to make the decision for the voters. I'm willing to work my butt off, go to these meetings, explain the necessity, and let the voters decide.
And that will delay implementing this. If you vote today just to do it under your discretion, it can be implemented January 1st. If it goes to the voters, it will not go, and they pass it, it will not go into effect till July 1st next year. And the hold harmless did not go to a vote, correct, or did it?
It what?
Did it go to a vote? Did voters approve it?
No, the hold harmless did not.
That was, that was by the commission. So, so they were doing that probably to, one, help their reelection if they still had another four years to explain why they did raise taxes. And it's not, even if you do it today under your authority without putting it to the voters, like, it does make sense to be transparent and explain it to people. And every time someone calls and has a complaint about this or that, explain to them that to deal with whatever their concern is, the budget had to be increased, the taxes had to be increased in order to support the budget and in order to provide the services that people are asking for.
The one thing you have to do, though, and that, and when I go to my meetings every month in Chaparral, I explain to them in every meeting what is happening here, what's going to affect them, and everything like that. The one thing we have to do, if you implement this, we better make dang sure that something starts happening on these digits, and it doesn't just, three, four years from now, they're still in the same shape as they are today. So, and I don't have a problem explaining to people. I go to the Builders Association meetings and explain to them when they ask me on what's happening through the county and the updates. I go to Chaparral. When I get so many phone calls from them, and I have to tell them, you know, it's funding and labor. Labor is the biggest deal, the manpower. So it's, you know, somehow we have to make it work.
I mean, the amounts are so small, depending on which, I mean, whether it's a 16th, an 8th, or 3/16th. I mean, it's so minimal that I would be in favor of the 3/16th because I think it's going to, the county's going to be able to have enough funds to start providing some better services for the community and hopefully get Otero County cleaned up. So I think I would be in favor of the 3/16th increase and not send it to a vote, since we can do this without going to a vote, because, and it's probably going against what I would normally think, because I would, my nature thinks, send it to the voters, but the downside of that is if it doesn't pass, we're going to be sitting in the same situation for the next few years, and nothing's going to get better around here. And this way, we can ensure that it will with very minimal increase to the, to the public. So my, my personal opinion is, is I would vote to increase the 3/16th tax, would have, it would only be an additional 19 cents per $100 spent. And I don't care if property taxes go enough. I think everybody that pays the grocery receipts is a little more fair. It's not just on the back of the property owners. So that's, that's how I feel on it.
And I didn't realize that the state could come back in for the courthouse deal if we had this extra 3/16th sitting here and make you implement it to the, apply it to the court building, which I still have big heartburn when the state mandates you to build a, buildings for their people. So, I'm trying to get that 3/16th out of the picture, operating into something for the people of the county.
I think we could reword a ballot question to include cleanup of blight properties.
If we, if it does go to ballot, we can adjust that however you want. I mean, we need to do it today, though, because, you know, the timeline.
I just look at the payables monthly and the overspending that we have, and we can cut it. Last month, we spent $1,500 on exercise equipment. We spent, we spent thousands of dollars on desks. We spent, I mean, we can, we can repair some desks for a few years, and we've got to make it happen. With all of this, everything, we can stop the spend. So if we vote, right now, we're discussing number one. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then we're going to turn around and either remove item two or vote on number one going to the ballot?
You're going to vote on number one to impose the tax, yes or no? Number two is whether you just impose it, if you vote it down, or you put it through voters. So one has to happen before two.
So we probably need to decide the amount of the increase for number one, to vote on it.
I make a motion that we consider the 3/16th tax.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So now, the next question is whether we want to put it on the ballot or not. And I would make a motion to not put it on the ballot and just impose the tax.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. So we're going to implement the 3/16th tax, and it's not going to go to the ballot. Correct? And I give you a thing, I do, if it didn't pass, wherein we're going to be in a fight with the school.
I give it both sides. I do. I just, it's not easy. It's, it's just, it is easier to just pass the tax, but, and I'm still going to put my due diligence in cutting the budget more. So, I mean, this isn't an excuse to spend.
Yeah. All right. Does anyone have anything else? All right, we are adjourned.